From the United States of America, a truly republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice to see all the smiling faces. I will call the meeting order, May nineteenth, twenty fifteen.
Fisher Brown, yes, Sparks.
Here.
Wyatt.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Matha.
Here.
Yabino.
Here.
Grant.
Aight.
I'd like to approve the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, may I have the minutes of the regular people base in council meeting of May? I'll sign that.
Ladies and gentlemen, anybody got any comments on this?
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt? St. Olson?
Yes.
Matha?
Yes.
Yabino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aight.
On to accounts payable.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve accounts payable as presented. I'll sign that.
Ladies and gentlemen, anybody got any questions on this? Paul Lee?
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt, St. Olson?
Yes.
Matha?
Yes.
Yabino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aight.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Moving on to special orders. Item A is Pacific West Ambulance Proclamation, May seventeenth through twenty-three, twenty-fifteen, Emergency Medical Services Week. Anyone has a proclamation in there? Yes, sir.
Is it just up to me now?
It's all you.
Alright. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Shkoshar. I am the Marketing and Customer Relations Director for Pacific West Ambulances. Pacific West Ambulance is providing ambulance service in the U.S. in nineteen eighty-seven. We're personally honored that you entrusted our company to serve your community and we look forward to our continued relationships. We thank you for the opportunity to appear here today. EMS Week is May seventeenth, this past Sunday, for the twenty-third. This proclamation before the city of Depot Bay Council is important to many teams of the EMS workers in Lincoln County. As the providers of pre-hospital care in Depot Bay, Pacific West EMS personnel are part of the team professionals providing emergency health care to your citizens. We feel honored that your community has entrusted us with the emergency care of your residents and try every day to continue to earn your trust. Because of your commitment to support of EMS, Lincoln County enjoys one of the finest emergency health care systems in Oregon. Our EMS partners include fire personnel, police, emergency room staff, and our goal is to meet the emergency needs of the community in a compassionate, timely, and professional manner. On behalf of all the EMS workers in Lincoln County, we thank you for the proclamation and your continued support for medical workers. I also have a plaque to present to you. The plaque is just to the Depot Bay City Council. Once again, we thank you for your continued support for emergency medical services we're here in Depot Bay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
For you either. Mr. Mayor, may I have the security recorder please read this proclamation?
Alright. Proclamation, to designate the week of May seventeenth through twenty-three, twenty-fifteen, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care for those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Depot Bay, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May seventeen through twenty-three, twenty-fifteen, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme EMS Strong, the Depot Bay City Council encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs and activities.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we endorse, accept, and have you sign this proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week?
Say it.
Ladies and gentlemen, Paul Lee.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Matha?
Yes.
Yabino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aight.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for you guys helping out. You guys do a great job.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
I like that plaque.
Yeah.
Very nice. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I want to take a picture of you two. You should get a picture of the two of you that have that plaque. So we can get that picture.
Mr. Mayor, it's a nice segue for the next topic.
It is. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a picture of you two with that plaque.
You want me to come over there?
Okay, perfect.
I'll just do that.
Yeah, that'd be better to get on against the actor up there. Yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me.
There you go.
Do the prize?
You guys should hold it up. And Mr. Mayor, why don't you shake his hand? You guys hold the plaque together. There you go, hold the plaque. There you go. You can do this, just four hands.
One more.
I take three.
Okay, God, thank you.
Hey, good night, dear.
Thank you so much.
Hold it, let me see this.
Yeah. Boy, it's not sending it to him. I like the color. Yeah, the color's nice. Looks good in your office. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Very nice. You're on the roll, Mayor. I mean, we're almost half way through. We get stiffer when we go over. IMB, Lincoln County Health and Human Services, mental health, first aid.
Alrighty. So my name is Sam Schaefer. I am from Lincoln County Health and Human Services, from public health, and I'm actually one of two individuals here in Lincoln County that are trained in adult first aid, which is what I'm here to talk to you guys about today. Unfortunately, Jennifer Mercy, who is a co facilitator, is unavailable to be here. So, first off, I'd like to thank you guys for inviting me to talk on this topic. It's fairly new in Lincoln County, although it's not new in Oregon. This program actually originated in Australia in two thousand and one. Two mental health professionals found that they were coming up against a lot of stigma for mental health, as well as a lot of fear, because a lot of people were just uneducated on the topic, or there was a lot of misinformation. I would find that still today, of course. So they created this curriculum, which then came over to the United States in about two thousand and eight, and it has since taken over. There are about four thousand people in the United States that are trained in mental health first aid, and we're hoping to continue to grow those numbers. So what is mental health first aid? As you'll see in your brochure, mental health first aid is help offered to a person developing a mental health problem or experiencing a mental health crisis. The first aid is given until appropriate treatment and support are received, or until the crisis is resolved, which is very similar to CPR. You know, you're not taught how to do heart surgery with CPR. You're taught to really assess their airway, their breathing, their circulation, and of course wait for medical attention to get there. And mental health first aid is very much the same way. So why we teach this course is because we know that mental health illness is very common. We know that one in five adults and about one in four youth are experiencing mental health illness at any given time, which is pretty high, and it's also very miscommunicated. There's a lot of disinformation, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of stigma, a lot of fear, and not very many resources, unfortunately. So through mental health first aid, we hope to, of course, not increase the professional help, but increase those who can help get individuals to professional help. The way we actually do this is we have an eight-hour course, either a youth curriculum, which is actually dedicated to individuals working with youth, not youth themselves, and then also an adult course. So what you learn in the course are different risk factors for mental illness, as well as signs and symptoms of an individual starting to develop a mental illness, or going to mental health crisis. The way we do this is an eight-hour course, and we can teach it either for the eight hours in one day, or we can split it up into two, and we teach it very much like a classroom style course. We have activities, so individuals can learn how to really participate with an individual in different scenarios. And the way we do this actually is through a five-step action plan, which I believe is in your brochure, if not, I can pass this around as well. So, very similar to CPR, there is an acronym that we use, and this one is ALG, the Five-Step Action Plan. And the A is Assess Risk of Suicide or Harm, and that's assessing the individual. So we're assessing, of course, for suicide, we want to find that out immediately, so that we can help them, and we're also assessing them for risk of harm in general, as well as risk of harm for ourselves as mental health first aiders. That is one thing we really like to touch on, is if the situation isn't safe for you, sometimes it's best, of course, to get an individual who may be better equipped for that situation. The second step is listen non-judgmentally. The third is give reassurance and information, and what we're talking about here is not resources. We're talking more along the lines of if someone's maybe new to the community and they're separate from depression because of being isolated, or, you know, they just don't feel like they're fitting in yet, it's giving that reassurance of, you know, you're new, and it can be difficult. What can I do to help you? As in, you know, not necessarily professional resources, but what are your interests? You know, what can I link you up with as far as maybe groups with the same interests or hobbies, that kind of thing? And then the next step is encourage appropriate professional help, which again is where we're looking for those professionals, like petitress, maybe it's a school counselor, it's just appropriate help. And we never tell our participants that they need to be the experts on what the local resources are. We actually give them a resource, so it's for all of the resources here in Lincoln County, as well as telling them to engage that individual and helping them find professional help with them. So saying, you know, you're experiencing this, this, and this, can be maybe work together to find what's most appropriate for you. And then the fifth step of this action plan is actually encourage self-help and other support strategies, which for most people actually is more efficient than professional help. So these are things like self-help books, or even just things that they know will calm them down, such as going hiking in the woods, or reading a book, that sort of thing, just helping them identify the things that might calm the situation, or, you know, basically just kind of ease the tension for this individual. And other support strategies, we're talking about possibly friends, talking to family, just finding those support individuals other than professionals out there. So through this five-step action plan, which I can pass around here. We teach participants how to really identify the mental health illness, crisis, or challenge that an individual might be facing through these five steps. And it's not a linear program. It's, you know, listening through the entire five-step process is probably a good idea, where it looks like it's only step two. So we really go through this for participants and help them to feel comfortable with those five steps. And again, it's an integral course. We have lots of activities to help them go through this action plan, and it's really to help them feel comfortable in addressing mental health illness, or even just noticing when there's a abrupt change in an individual, so that they can either help them get professional help, or help them through that crisis. So that's a little bit about the program. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Sam. You mentioned folks that are trained on CPR typically, who fall into the category of getting the mental health first aid as well?
Certainly, certainly. We, the audience for mental health first aid can really be anyone. It can be public safety officers, it could be first responders, it could be teachers, it can be pretty much anyone. And we're really opening this to the community, because we think that's really where it's most needed, and that's where a lot of the misinformation stems from. You know, people just not being educated on it, or just going off of the routine, which of course highlights the most extreme cases.
So that leads me to, I'm sorry, I just had to follow up. Leads me to the question for Brady. Who do we have trained for CPR in our, on our city staff?
I think the entire field group is trained, yes.
Well, it's first aid and CPR. Okay, it would be, it would be my thought, open for discussion, of course, is to think in the context of adding this to our toolkit, because Brady, you have talked to me on occasion about how we're interacting with the community a lot here, and there are times when we bump into situations that, you know, might just be in this category. So I would just like to suggest that we put it on the agenda and talk about who we might want to train for this, and consider it a priority. It would be my motion, if I made a motion, that's what it would be. Yeah, one of the employees that are involved with the public, the most, and, you know, it's not that I do it all.
And we see a lot of like frontline staff getting trained on these sorts of things, people who are dealing with the public conflict, whether it's in the medical profession or not, you know, the people who are, yeah, right in the front lines, where they see this often, and a lot of times they're not trained on mental health illness, or even just have those coping skills to talk to an individual, be sensitive of their situation.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Sam, once a person, let's see, it's the mayor, so it's regular citizen, not private staff, excuse me, gets trained, then is there some kind of organizational list? Do you call out to these people as volunteers to go meet with someone, or is it just a case of you run into someone on the street and you realize they need some help?
So it's the latter. It's, once you get trained, you really just have the tools to interact with individuals. Again, you don't have to interact with every single individual that you might be, you might think is experiencing a mental health challenge or disorder, but it does give you the tools to feel comfortable in that situation, which is why we're really pushing to have as many community members and professionals get trained as possible, because it really is a great tool set to have. You know, we're not teaching people to diagnose or become treatment specialists by any means. Matter of fact, we tell them that's exactly the thing you should not be doing, but just you have enough skills to be sensitive in those situations, and get a little bit more information about mental health, even if you don't end up feeling comfortable to address.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Is there a offer for this?
No.
Okay.
We're offering it for free here at the county.
Okay.
Is there a, is there like a crisis helpline?
There is here in Lincoln County. There's a twenty-four hour crisis line. It's not on that brochure, but I can get it to you. And actually, I can get the entire council, our list of resources for mental health first aid, which includes not only our local ones here in Lincoln County, but also our national ones.
And no doubt, you'd do that out once someone completes training anyway.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to, if this is not the right time, I don't know, but I'd like to make a motion that we, the city of Depot Bay Council adopt a goal to have mental health first aid training for selected staff or others in our town, and consider it a policy for the future. Could you hold that thought for just a minute?
I think it needs more discussion.
Hold on, we need, someone needs a second motion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, now we can discuss.
Okay, thank you. Brady?
Yeah.
In our employment package, we have a first aid requirement, and we can include this mental health thing in as well, for our employees in the field.
Yeah, I believe it's written that we should have our CPR and first aid, and it goes in with the flyers, certifications, and other certs, but, yeah, I mean, it could be adopted into the employee's, yeah. Maybe just for certain employees, maybe, that are in direct contact?
You want to say something?
Some of our employees don't really even go outside of like the wastewater plant, maybe just to travel to the pump station or something, but some of our employees are directly, you know, involved with the public throughout the day, doing maintenance and stuff out on the highway and whatever.
Go ahead.
Does the city have a, the staff have, is there a safety committee?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah.
I personally think as a former president, a safety committee in Salem, I would think that the safety committee president and maybe a few of the members of the committee, you know, anybody that, for instance, the emergency trainer that we have, anybody that would be, you know, manning that or deploying that in case of an emergency, because I could see that this would tie in also with rescue and recovery efforts if there was a natural disaster like a tsunami, or, you know, something of that nature as well. That would be my recognition.
That's why I interrupted Steve, I was going to see if he could make that motion to include training of our field staff along with the first aid.
Who is our liaison officer? Robert Hugle is our liaison for safety right now? Who is Brady?
Me.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was just wondering if this isn't something that maybe the safety committee should bring up, make the recommendations for whether we do this or not with the staff and who matters?
Okay.
Because they're safety guys.
Yeah, right. I mean, I just, I have a few concerns. I mean, the difference between CPR and mental health is totally different. Oh, definitely, definitely. And an eight-hour training for myself, I'm not going to feel comfortable trying to talk down somebody that's having a mentally ill crisis. And that's just my own personal opinion, and...
And some people do walk away from the class thinking, you know, that I will never ever come up against someone like that, because I won't feel comfortable.
Right.
And, you know, in those instances, what we tell those participants typically is, you know, that's fine, if you don't feel comfortable...
It's not a matter of comfortable, it's a matter of like an eight hour, and I don't think I would have the training.
Right, the skills.
Or the ability to be able to do that. It's not something that I think I would probably be comfortable with, I guess.
Right, and some people don't. But what we do say is, it's not always an individual in crisis that you're coming up against. A lot of times, it's just an individual that maybe you notice there's some changes. So it doesn't always have to be a stranger either.
Exactly, I understand.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, is that mostly that we understand?
Yeah, exactly, it's the most...
Yeah, I'd like to move that we consider adopting mental health first aid as part of the city of Depot Bay safety policy. It may require more discussions and planning. It's a motion to take some action really on the subject of mental health first aid. Brady, did I get that right?
Yes, you changed a couple of words, but...
But you got, you get what I'm saying?
I'm going to ask the reporter just to read it back, so we have...
Okay. The most reasonable, well, the primary difference between the first one, that the city of Depot Bay City Council adopt a goal, and what you just said was to adopt a safety policy, work for a safety policy. The rest of it is to have mental health first aid training for staff, and originally you said others in the community, and now you're talking about a safety policy, so...
That's right.
But to get the ball rolling, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's the moment, that's the motion, thank you.
So do we hear a second, or this?
That's, I'll take the, I'll second the motion as elected.
Yes, sir. So we kind of all agree with that one automatically, by including taking this as a recommendation to the safety committee to review and see if they agree, and if they have any other input, or no?
You know what, I just want to say that Kathy is on the safety committee, Brady's on the safety committee. Who else, Brady?
I don't know.
I really think we should adopt the goal, do what you say, but they can, I would have them decide who's the most appropriate people to be trained at the city level.
That, that sounds about right to me.
Sounds okay? Yes, sir.
Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we always are looking for people in the public. I would venture to guess that the staff of Depot Bay, if a crisis happens, most likely it probably will be somebody on the staff itself. So, keeping that in mind, I mean, I don't know what to say, because they're the people that they see most there.
It really depends. So again, for mental health first aid, we go, it can go all the way to crisis, but we're also talking about addressing those individuals who are on their way.
So, I would, I would just recommend a generous training program for, to include as many people in the city staff as possible.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it should be open to anybody who, really who has an interest in doing it.
Even me, I might be interested.
Well, and it is, I mean, it's free in any of us.
Right. As a public, more private citizen, I'm assuming.
All right, any more discussion?
I think it should be, like she said, it should be a voluntary thing. I don't think it should be adopted into the city, like hiring thing, personally, but...
You don't see it going into the employee handbook?
No.
You know, that's, that is the point. You know, I would defer to the city staff, again, to come back to us or the safety committee. Would come back and tell us.
Make the recommendation, just like we do a lot of things. I like that process here in our community, to be able to go through that process and then come back and make a recommendation.
Yeah, in the whole...
So, we're on iteration three, so Brady, do we need to amend that, or what does it say, what does it say exactly? I know, I understand this is difficult for you.
So, so it's evolved into that the city council of the city of Depot Bay, well, I don't know if we still want to say adopt a safety policy, or change it to refer the matter to the safety committee for a recommendation to look at a policy.
I think that was the latest version.
I think, I think that's now evolved through discussion. I was hoping that this discussion would happen, and it should evolve that way, yes.
Would you, would you take a stab at?
Oh, I'd take a stab at it.
At first, well, it's something, how about, first you redo it, and to do that, the person who seconded it has to say that's okay. Who seconded this motion? Jerome? Jerome, is that right?
I would be frankly to another iteration of the motion to, if I'm getting it right, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, to, are we going to make it a voluntary program or a required program?
The safety committee is going to...
Safety committee.
Right, the safety committee.
And that's going to come back to us?
Yes.
Okay, I'm down with that.
Okay. Number four.
I'd like to make a motion that we refer mental health first aid training to our safety committee to evaluate, consider, and come back to the city council with recommendation on how we perceive, potentially with a policy.
That's perfect.
I'll sign that.
I, it's already said, I, I second.
You guys weren't throwing the gloves?
No, me, Robbie did that just now.
Pre-seconded.
All right, if there's no more discussion, off we go.
On, on that one, okay. Olson?
Yes.
Mattler?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes, aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spark?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I, I would like to, I would like to say to you that this is very, very significant to have a community, a rural community, put this item on the agenda in the first place like we did the first of the year, and to actually take some action on it and be here today. So, I hope you can appreciate that we are thankful that you're here and we're gonna proceed.
Certainly, and I, again, appreciate being asked to come and talk about this, but it's fairly new with the county and we're very excited to introduce it.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll set a press line.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
We're leaving.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. On to item six, reports of officers, boards, or standing committees, so we have one over there. Did you have something in mind on that one, Perry?
Me? No.
Nobody stood up, so I got some more want sneaky train. All right. Public comments, anybody care to enlighten the council? Carl? All right, moving right along. One thanks business, there's an item of land acquisition by the way.
Perry, just a kind of order on this, um, you know, we're gonna have a discussion about potential purchase of this property. And, you know, there might be the suggestion that we're going to, uh, if we go forward, do some negotiating. Cause you always do that with land purchase, should we not, uh, express the exact amount but express percentages if we're gonna negotiate? You know, you understand what I'm saying? Not to prejudice our position in case somebody's listening that wants to buy that property.
Right, uh, and you're, you're speaking of tax lot seventy-seven.
That is correct, yes.
So, uh, you all received a confidential envelope, and, and the reason for that is just as you spoke. Um, that is confidential information for your eyes at this point. So then it would be up to the council if you want to move to enter into a negotiation on that lot, seventy-seven hundred. You also have received an email from Yvonne Crandall regarding tax lot eighty-four hundred, that's the lot above here right next door to the big number building. Um, she said that she has received a letter from Brady Weider, Weider's city superintendent, advising her of numerous ordinance violations on lot eighty-four hundred. Um, she's working with him to resolve issues. And she said at this point, I would like to know whether the City of Depot Bay is still interested in purchasing this lot. If not, we will list it for sale. So, she, she would like, I mean, we, we approached her for lot seventy-seven hundred, she responded. Um, but she also would really like to hear back from the council on lot eighty-four as well.
So we can separate the, the two discussion things?
Absolutely.
Um, just so if we move forward, we should talk about tax lot seventy-seven hundred? Okay, and, uh, who wants to start?
That, uh, just for a little review, that's the one we had a long discussion about last time.
I don't know if it was a long discussion, but it's the one that's count by the fish plant.
Cause one way old.
Yeah, what's the name of that boat that sits on it? Jim Bob?
Jimmy, yeah. We were thinking, it's, it's-
The end of Newark, I think.
Well, I'm sorry, Jim Bob sits north of, yeah. You know, we would beat this to death.
Is that the same one that we, I'm, I'm a little bit confused, it sits, the one we were talking about?
I believe it was here.
Oh, here?
No, I, you know, I think you were talking about the granite property, the parking lot.
Oh, the granite, no, it's not the granite property.
No, no, no.
It would be helpful if we, do we have a, a graphic that where it is?
Brady, could you just draw a little picture behind you?
Yeah, that's not why I, my drawing is very good. Okay, Shell Street comes down, goes, uh, this way, the, the boat ramp is located right here. Kinda goes around the harbor, um, this way, actually Shell Street comes down through this way too. Say the Jim, so this is the boat ramp, right? Launch docks and that, right? Um, this is Shell Street, fish plant's located here, the slangeal plant's located here. Um, if you can visualize the, uh, Jim Bob sits in the bushes about right here. Um, that lot is located about right in kinda this area here.
What's the dimensions?
Bill's fourshow, you know, I don't really know, it's-
One acres. Yeah, it's all, it's-
The condos sit right here. Um, the highway's up here.
Okay.
Bill's fourshow.
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you now.
Okay, Brady, I think you have some information.
We were, we were looking into if we could level this out, maybe put a retaining wall in. There's a drain that needs to be put in here, but this could be gravelled and utilized for trailer parking to get some of the parking off the highway. They could back in here and get several trailers to back in. Cause the salmon guys, tuna guys, they kind of end it's a free-for-all and they end up on the highway and mishmash and stuff. I know it's, it may be little, but it's something.
No, I don't get fourteen of them off the road that you use.
Is that that?
Good, okay, I, I've just got a, uh, a way of looking at this. I mean, the marine board was nice enough, we've got these facilities down there, uh, to launch boats and to park trucks. Um, generally speaking, this is an aesthetic for the second, the town, but the actual lesser hearts, people that use the boat ramp, the parking down there, they're not, not up in town spending money. Generally speaking, they don't live here, generally speaking, they consume our services without leaving much behind. And they've got an area, and as far as parking up in the town, that's not, if, if, if it is, it could be, that's not legal. We can limit that and limit where they're parking. I guess before we entertain buying any more land for parking down in the boat harbor, that there's other places to parking that, for, that even at the modest price of this property, that there's other places around town that could, that could use the city's help in having parking rather than there. And that should be addressed before we do anything by any property down in, down in the harbor, period.
Go ahead.
With all due respect, uh, this piece of property is an interesting piece of property and this location is the part that, uh, really has my interest. And, you know, yeah, if we provide some additional parking for the trailer sailors, well, we're a little bit further ahead. For alleviating, hold on, we can, alleviating traffic on one-one, but my interest in this property is, uh, twofold more. One is, is that it's right next door to a plant or a piece of property and, uh, there's a potential in the future that that could become even more valuable. And two, perhaps that's where we stage some kind of secure access control to the ramp, I don't know this, but that would give us the ability to garner the revenues that these, uh, trailer sailors, uh, not all of you guys, but some of you guys have not been paying faithfully. And so I, I just see it as an opportunity for some immediate problems in the harbor to be solved and also a potential future purchase. That can be valuable if something else were to happen down below.
My thoughts going around, I think you were next.
My question is, I know it's a modest price, but you said we had to build a retaining wall, the parking there. I think before we purchase, um, I'm kinda with Jerome on that, I think we need to fix what's broken down there before we start a new project. Because that would not, that is, just doesn't include buying that property, correct? And we have to fix it up, do the retaining wall, put the parking spells in, I mean, that's-
Or drain system in my-
I mean, that's, it's not just a purchasing the property.
No, it would need to be graded and a, a drain pipe put in.
So they would be more, uh, you know, a bigger cost, is what I'm saying.
I, you know, I'm not, I just mentioned retaining wall, I'm not sure, I, it, it, it does slow costs, but the other properties do. It's a building itself, so it has retaining like the condos, but it's not steeper in there, so I'm just guessing.
I would, I would maintain that, or suggest that, um, I, I, I feel that there is considerable expenditure by the trailer fleet people. I don't know how many times I've been by Worldmark, and let's face it, Worldmark is a transient no-tax king. And there's frequently two, three, four boat traders sitting there for sometimes a week. I know for a fact, as I talked to by a few of them, that shop at just a quarter mark, well, that's the seventy-six station, but other, uh, they'll pop in to, uh, to get a bowl of chowder somewhere, a sandwich or whatever, ice, always ice. Um, I think that we are garnering something from them and if, and then reflecting on something Zeke said, if we can get a piece of property that cheaply, um, I think we'd be crazy enough and look at developing it for trailer fleet parking.
I keep thinking about our pro, uh, parking development action item that we have consistent with our, um, infrastructure and planning and see potentially that this is an appropriate piece of property that would, might fit into that overall parking development, uh, analysis that we're gonna do at some point, I don't know who has ownership, but that's part of the infrastructure.
We're gonna be talking about that this evening.
Uh, but, uh, my question is, couldn't you just, uh, buy that piece of property as an investment, uh, and, and, and figure out all the rest of it later?
That's what I'm thinking.
Um, because, uh, I see the investment opportunity and I also see that we have a bigger, uh, responsibility for the parking development planning, that patchwork is not what we wanna do in the future. But the land itself sounds like a good investment for the city.
Jerome?
Well, I just think that if we're gonna be looking at expanding parking in the harbor, we should also, um, be cognizant of the fact that not everybody who comes to Depot Bay comes to use the harbor. And we really need to have comprehensive parking in place for, you know, for all areas of town. Uh, there are a lot of people who come down to, you know, just to stand and look out at the ocean or to shop at the, at the retail stores. And so, you know, I, I don't, I, I'd like to see all areas of Depot Bay advantaged, I guess if that's a word, by, uh, by some comprehensive, uh, looks at the parking as it is and maybe some research for it.
Jerome's next question.
I can, I, wait a minute, Jerome, I haven't had a turn yet. Brady?
Yes.
Did you, uh, check on the, uh, the tax base on this piece of property?
Well, uh, it was, uh, assessed value of it, is what you mean?
Or what's the taxes would come?
It was, um, it's somewhere around sixteen thousand.
So in other words, uh, it's assessed for about half of what asking price is?
Yeah.
That was another question.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Go ahead, Jerome.
I'd like, I, I, I'd say neither, I would mind or let's just educate the council on the parking situation in Depot Bay, okay? Let's go from, starting at the community center, okay? There's some city parking there around, uh, that lot, a little bit in front of the community center that the city owns. Right near the boat harbor. Then we hit the boat harbor and all those parking spaces in there, the city owns, dedicated basically to the boat harbor. Then let's work our way around the bay and we have the, the city park, there's some parking a little bit back there around the city park and the boat harbor. And then there's the trailer parking that we provide for the boat harbor. That's all the city parking we have, the rest of it uptown is leased. That's all the city owns as far as parking goes for the public and it's all dedicated to the boat harbor. I'm saying enough is enough, we need to look at other, other parking and there's, and there's a time to, you know, to do that and I think that the time to draw the sand, line in the sand is, is now. Let's secure parking in other places that benefit downtown businesses. The center of gravity for, for, um, commerce in, 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 uh, the Depot Bay has changed. It's not, it's not down in the boat harbor, they're part of it, but the center of gravity has moved uptown to, to downtown, to Worldmark. So I just, that's, that's where I'm standing, a little bit passionate, I think there's a time to, to draw the line in the sand and look at other places that we can procure parking rather than the boat harbor.
Do you mind, uh, with respect, uh, I, I see, uh, Consular Grant's, uh, vision on, on the parking and it's connected back to the parking development plan we have for the city. What I keep thinking about and it might be connected to what Zeke is thinking about, is that, is this, couldn't we not just consider this a good investment? And not decide today how we're gonna use it?
All right.
Okay, that's all I wanna say.
Yeah.
You know, we've been discussing, I, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, let me just, uh, I have to give a question, but I haven't seen anything and you, you're near on the property, but I feel the same as, uh, Steve does, I think it's a, like, an investment and we should, uh, uh, at the price especially, invest in that piece of property. Cause we don't have, uh, a clue right now what we're definitely gonna use it for. But I'll guarantee that the, the, the property owner just north of it has got enough money to buy it. He's got a clue what he's gonna do with that property, so, um, I really feel it's a good investment for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, enter into negotiations with Miss Crandall for that particular tax lot seventy-seven hundred. And I, uh, further suggest that, uh, as an initial offering, we, uh, discount it by twenty-five percent and see where it goes.
Say. Any discussion on that motion?
Call please.
Mattler? Mattler?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
I'd say no.
Well, do you have a conflict? Can't understand, I want you to have a time.
No.
Yes.
Make your own case. Wyatt?
Top one.
So your feelings?
My feelings, um-
Well, that's kind of-
We're voting out.
I mean, what do you feel? How do you feel?
I'm gonna say no.
And then answer that.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm sorry?
Motion passes.
Thank you. On to item B.
Can I ask one question on that? So if they accept that proposal with the twenty-five percent, then we purchase it?
I suppose so.
And if they don't, then we come back to the table?
Well, now, to us, yes.
It would still come back with the, I mean, uh, it would still come back to us, I mean, they've said yes, you, you want to go ahead. Now we can decide that.
And, and we're gonna pick up later on what we're gonna do with it.
Right.
So this is an investment decision, that's what my vote, that's my vote.
That's an investment.
I do say-
Let's, you know, keep in mind that, because that's, that amount of money less than you could spend, I mean, does this council care about downtown businesses?
Is that really a fair question?
I think it's one that, that everybody needs to ask themselves. I think it's one that, that everybody needs to ask themselves.
All right, that, that decision has been made. On to item B, public relations trip to Washington DC.
First.
If, if I may, before we move on, um, uh, I would ask you to consider Mrs. Crandall's request to respond about tax lot eighty-four hundred.
Should we delay?
You could do whatever you want, but if you can just, yeah, if you wanna, if you want to delay or, uh, your reply to her on tax lot eighty-four hundred, I can let her know that.
You know, can we, when we go into, uh, how about we do this thing about Washington State as a party that is gonna be part of it? Okay, and maybe we can swing back at the end, they talk about her request on, is it eighty-eight or eighty-four hundred?
Eighty-four hundred.
Eighty-four hundred, that's okay.
Uh, it's up to, it's up to-
No, it's two different lots, that's a lot that he described. And then she also owns a lot that, that's the one that is next door to the sign, or is that the one underneath the sign?
It's the vacant, well, I use the term vacant lot. It's just no building on it, it's immediately to the south of the big metal building out here. It's got quite a bit of stuff on it.
Wood, it's the one with all the driftwood on it. Yeah, she wants a number for that one, I believe. That's pretty stunning.
Okay.
We're going, going back a little bit, uh, Perry. Wasn't, were we offered as a city, uh, a property that the signs are on? If the signs could remain?
You know, I have not heard from the, uh, the company that owns the lot that has most of the billboard on it for some time. Um, they were trying to work out with the property, with the south, that has part of the billboard on it, uh, kind of a deal that the city was interested in purchasing. They were looking into, um, rehabbing the existing billboard to make it on one pedestal, raise it so there would be more room underneath. And the last time there was any information, the, the gentleman's name is wrong. Um, he had checked with ODOT about redoing a billboard sign, and it didn't look like it could, uh, he was, you know, 'cause it's like, you can't, as long as they're there, they can be there.
Yeah. As I recall, last year, that's when that all came together, or came up.
It was about a year.
And if we had both those parcels together, it would really be advantageous for the city. And for other commerce other than just parking.
I know the city has talked about for some time, for some years, this corner parcel, the middle one, and that has most of the billboard on it. And then lot eighty-four hundred, which is vacant, and, oh, I can remember a councilor years ago talking about acquiring that to, um, have a welcome to Depot Bay with parking. Um, but it's, it, I haven't heard anything for it. It's been about a year.
Sure, that's a, that's a-
Well, I think it's, council should decide if that's something that, uh, we really want to look at acquiring, that, those three parcels. Because the last time we talked about it, um, that this corner one, the southernmost, was in Hippy. And I know that the middle one that has the most billboard on it, they really wanted to, um, per- maybe sell their property, get the southern one tied in, the city buy it all, and provide them an eternal easy for their sign for the billboard.
Yes.
And that discussion kind of, um, it kind of got distorted between the property owners.
I seem to remember something about that, that they were offering that property at no cost as long as they can leave their signs up.
I remember something about that too.
I, I believe it was, uh, reduced, they were talking about reduced cost. But if the council wants, you know, we can, we can knock on those doors again. Like I say, it's just kind of, it's-
Do we need a motion on that?
This is kind of what's going on there. This is the triangle lot here, intersection, this is the billboard lot. This is lot eighty-four hundred, this is the wood carving business over here, Kelp Forest Gallery. This is the coffee shop, Seagull, Curio Shop over here with the old cars. And then north of that is the flying machine. So that just kind of comes like a ship. Can I, uh, just, I have a question up here, is, who is this, who is all this parking for? What business does it benefit? Are people going to, um, walk across the drifts down to the south end of town? Are they doing that now? I mean, I, I just, I guess, I see, again, the expansion of parking that doesn't benefit downtown at all. I, 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 I guess what I, what would be best is to get the stakeholders of downtown businesses in here to realize that they're, that one little twist, one, just, just one property owner down there, let's say Rich Allen, uh, could say, I'm not leasing my parking anymore. And it would literally choke downtown business. The heart, the center of gravity of Depot Bay would, it would end.
Who's first?
Okay, so ladies first.
Ladies first.
Ladies first.
All right, go ahead, Jerome.
I, I wanted, wanted to speak in support of what Jerome is saying. And again, this is from six years, six and a half years of sitting down on the north end of town every single weekend without fail. And people, it's a sad, it's that state of affairs in some, in some ways, but people don't want to walk to where they want to shop. They wanna park in front of where they're planned on being, and they might go maybe a half a block or a block one way, or a half a block or a block the other way. And then, but they don't wanna get too far from their cars. And remember, we get a lot of people down from, you know, Portland and places where people are used to, you know, high rate car theft, so they don't wanna let, let their car out of their sight. And so, if they can't park within a block of where they want to shop, they are not going to stop. They're gonna keep on going until they can find some place where they, you know, that they feel suits their convenience. And that's the way it is. I mean, you know, the business that I work for has struggled with that since we opened. And even six and a half, going on seven years now in one location, we're still getting people to say, oh, well, I never get down this way, so I didn't even know you were here. And, you know, there's just nothing more devastating to a business owner when you put your heart and soul and, you know, hopefully you've got good people who are doing the same, working for you to, to try and build the business to here, you know, almost seven years in that you, you know, you still have people who just don't walk down that far because they wanna park in front, you know, of where, you know, where they're used to being. And they really don't, you know, they don't go, go any further than maybe a block, two blocks and a half at the most.
Can I just add, add one, one comment, Mr. Mayor? Because about the property that is for sale up in town, that would benefit downtown parking.
Let's let these guys have their chance, we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll tell you what I'm passionate about. And, uh, since I've been on city council the first of the year, even before that, I see too much patchwork in this community, and I wanna see a parking development, uh, strategy and a plan. Because we're gonna be going on forever and ever talking about bits and pieces of the parking issue, and it might be premature to buy anything that's connected with parking until we have that, uh, just like we have a harbor master plan. Why can't we have a parking plan?
We do.
Uh, because that's what I'm passionate about. I'm passionate about business parking, I'm passionate about harbor parking, I'm passionate about parking in general. But I'm not so good on all this patchwork discussion that we keep getting into.
Devin, tell us a question.
I did walk, um, down through the harbor, up to the shops. I can honestly tell, I mean, I walk a lot, I have a dog, so I'm constantly walking. I can tell you, people are not gonna park in the harbor to go up shopping. It's not gonna happen though. They're just not gonna do it. Um, I think if we had a parking up there with a sign that said public parking to where it's visible when you're coming into town, because I personally don't like to park my nice vehicle next to somebody and have their doors bang and different things. But if there's a big parking area where people know that they can park and shop and leave their car there, I think that would, I think that would benefit our city.
Mine's just a general comment, 'cause I was actually intending in this next item B to discuss the parking, 'cause it is important and it's something that, it's a global issue, you're right, Steve, it's not patchwork. And to do this thing globally is maybe beyond the means of real tiny depot bay. Let me finish, let me just finish. Um, the other thing is that we do have a parking master plan, and I would encourage that parking master plan, we have that, right? The study that was done a couple of years ago.
We have a few.
I would encourage you to copy that master plan, goes to each and every one of the councils, uh, prior to the next meeting, because this is gonna be put on the agenda, because it's such a large, important issue. But I think, since we already have some base work, groundwork, so to speak, we should see what's been said before, and we should either jettison that plan or work off of that plan and improve and modify the plan. That's all I wanted to say, Jerome.
Okay, I just, uh, there's, there's, there's other parking that could, that could be available for downtown. Now, one premium, premium spot, and this would benefit both the north side and, and central, okay? And that is, John Widmark said he would sell his, uh, his land, he, he's got two lots up there on Collins Street, okay? Where, um, Collins and, help me out here.
Oh, is it Collins Street? Collins?
Collins and Collins, yeah.
And then the other one is not Collins, it's the one that-
There's two up there, but there's two, Conway and Collins, I think, is, is the juncture there.
Yeah.
There's two lots there.
I know those lots, they're behind your place. They're kind of behind the shop.
Yeah, they are, yeah. I mean, it's premium, I mean, they're not gonna be offered, uh, for inexpensive.
No.
Okay? But they would secure quite a number of spots, uh, going forward for basically the whole downtown area. There is also, um, the, the parking lot adjacent to the Spatting Horn. Uh, but those are two, two spots, um, that, that could be available. But that, that's why I'm, because if we talk about boat harbor, uh, and the parking around it, that, that it's basically the only parking the city owns, and it benefits, it does benefit some businesses. It benefits all the charter boats down there, okay? And, uh, and it benefits the charter boat companies, mainly one, that's our charters. No offense, it's just a fact. Uh, but there's probably, between those two, those two spots on the harbor, which would be the east side and the, uh, south, uh, southwest side, where it is, we're talking probably, what? Hundred, a hundred and fifty spaces? And, and, and guess, and guess how much parking the city owns up in, in, in town? Zero, zero. That, that's not like none. Everybody see that? And get it? Zero, none.
Oh, but I, you know, why can't we put that down as an agenda item? Uh, connected with our parking development planning? Uh, I agree with, uh, Consular Grant and, uh, the discussion about overall parking, especially the business community. I hate to see us keep going back and forth between the harbor and downtown. I think we oughta, uh, look at the whole parking, um, issue and come to some kind of place where everybody agrees. I don't know what, I've never seen a master parking plan. We apparently have plans that are gathering dust on the shelf that we haven't seen.
I have a question too. Oh, okay. Yeah, I totally agree with you, um, you know, the patchwork stuff is not working. Um, we have, you know, we, we've had an offer staring us in the face for like a year now that we, you know, can't move on. And what I'm looking at, you know, and I know that there's things about that and all, but what I'm looking at, not as a business owner, but as somebody who works downtown and is very dedicated to the business that I work at, is that that's, that's, you know, one particular lot that is lying fallow, gonna just be sitting there useless, not being used, because nothing, no action's been taken on it. There's two lots up there which are very convenient to downtown, with the one that Jerome were talking about that the Woodmarks own. Um, those would be wonderful places to put city-owned parking, and that would, that would ensure that it was there for, for all of downtown. It's within a very easy walk of downtown for even, you know, people who have the most difficulty, I would say. And it, even if they, they can't make it up and down that short, you know, one block, walk of the hill, they can still wait down and somebody can, can come down and pick them up from there. The, the, the fact is that downtown is going to, you know, is, is expanding and taking, or bringing in, I would have to say at least a third, if not more, of the revenue that Depot Bay is bringing in, and we need to do everything we can to encourage that. So, yeah, I would like to move that we put, make an agenda item to, uh, put the parking master plan on the agenda and start working on whatever revisions need to be made and start moving forward on these things.
My second.
Thank you.
Robert?
My comment is a question. Joe, what lot is lying fallow?
This is the one that's been on the table, um, an offer from, uh, the Grenat family.
That's not lying fallow.
That's not being used.
That's, yeah, okay.
I was just gonna make a, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I don't know if anybody's ever been up to Park City, Utah, in Utah, ever?
I am.
Long time ago?
I am.
I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's, it was a two, a one-way street that went up. You could either park on either side, so, because it's, you know, morphed into, you know, one of, you know, Deer Valley, et cetera, there's no parking downtown. They have parking lots that are on by Park City, and you park in those lots, and everybody has to walk.
Just like skiing.
Yep. So-
Yeah, a city can charge for this parking.
And it's, you have to pay to park up there, it's five bucks or, it's probably ten now, but-
There's an income opportunity here.
There's just, I mean, nobody wants to, you know, to do that, but if you wanna go downtown Park City, that you're gonna park and either take a little shuttle bus and you're gonna pay to park in your slots there.
All this will come out of the parking development.
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea.
Good idea.
Go ahead.
I just wanna-
Go ahead.
Right, right, the point, the point order is that, I thought I heard, uh, Council President, is that I thought, I heard a motion and a second.
I was just kidding.
All right.
I was just kidding, that. Um, Joe, you, uh, Purry, did you get a chance to record your motion?
Um, what I have is put the parking master plan on the agenda and start working on it.
That's fine. And I might suggest that, uh, again, in advance, we have master packets out there, anybody that's studied, that's been done. And, um, potentially, uh, maybe, uh, what we need, some graphics, just, just to identify the different parking lots or chances for properties. I, I guess where I'm going is, is that Steve's right, we don't wanna do this patchwork. And we can put this on the agenda. I know I wanted to talk about this on the PR trip, because there's funding opportunities there too. But I'm wondering for a discussion next time, Jerome, we shouldn't have like a, a representation of those properties that we potentially could grant.
I like that idea.
Just to see them, just to have it like up on the wall to look at.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be beneficial, I think, would, would be, and, and beneficial to bring Larry Lewis in on the discussion, because he's, I think, uh, probably the individual that helped develop the, the parking master plan. Is, is that what I mean?
Jerome need property.
In aggregate to say that?
Um, he was involved. Um, the plan was done by Oregon Downtown Development, well, it was a grant through them, so he certainly has experience in parking plans, yes.
And Jerome need property is up there too, but I don't know, uh-
Well, there, there's lots to discuss, there's lots of different lots of property. You're right, we have a parking lot we've just kind of said we're not sure about still. It's gotta be done in context of the bigger picture. You're right, Jerome, you're right, you're right, that's, I'd say let's get it on the agenda, let's start discussing this. 'Cause it is something we can move on. How we get there, I don't know, but it's something that's certainly discussing move on.
It's very critical that we get strategic, we become strategic thinkers.
All right, call the questions, please.
Gabino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mattel?
Yes.
Did you?
Did you have a comment?
I'm breaking?
No, no, I didn't break it, sir.
Okay, now, would you like to get back to the DC?
Yeah, one of the DC thing. Um, briefly, uh, we had a discussion with Ray Buhaber yesterday, and at that teleconference was the mayor, Brady, uh, Purry, and myself. And we were following up and asking additional questions to- questions to our lobbyists in DC about our action plan, what we're thinking of doing. And from that phone call, most important thing I got, and I don't know, Purry, I'll have you kick in too, but the most important thing I got is that we need to have an asking list. We need to know what we're going to be asking for, and he also went on to say that what you ask for may not be what you get so prepared to have other items that you can jump on. Is that a fair assessment?
Mm-hmm. He said, yeah, and he said make the list, narrow down your top two or three, focus on those, but have the others there, if somebody says, oh, we might have money for one of them.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, I was hoping part of the discussion today is that we could go ahead and start, uh, making a quick list of the, I was hoping maybe Brady could write them up on the smudge bar. I'm sorry you're not the secretary, it's your, but you're there. And so everybody can see what we're talking about.
Yeah.
John?
No.
I, I, I have a couple items, I know, I've asked you for a couple items also.
Yeah, we've got a lot of that, uh, stuff that, was that the meeting, we have the meeting hall? A lot of stuff we, we, you know, those are a lot of the items that were in the harbor and stuff there. Other issues too that we need to address.
So Brady, uh, and I talked to Brady, uh, day before yesterday and yesterday, you know, all of us have our own items that we're aware of that need to be done. Some of them were short-term, medium-term, some of them possibly long-term, but I asked Brady in particular to think of those projects that are long-term, global, and their application to town, and some we may not necessarily be thinking about.
Yeah.
So I was wondering if you could get Brady to just put his top two or three up there that we can pull around.
All right. May I? I just don't want us to get sidetracked here. Uh, we need to keep this in the context of the larger meeting and the harbor master plan and, uh, not put, push that aside. This should be connected...
Yes.
To the, see, this is where the patchwork thing becomes a disease, is that we, we, we start something and then we go off in another direction. I'm hoping that we're not doing that. List that this is connected with the...
It is. It is a larger picture than just the harbor.
Okay, I agree.
We wanted to add a few.
What Jerome was talking about is large for the other...
Okay, I agree. I just want to make sure...
I'm not saying we're discounting anything we came up with before, but we need to come up with items, and we have to then work through them and find out what...
In the context of what we, uh, met a few weeks ago in the context of planning for this, uh, presentation in, uh, DC.
Yes, no disagreement.
Okay.
What do you, what do you think for your top items?
Um, Mike, well, it's almost failing infrastructure. Um, the upgrade of the wastewater plant is, is inevitable, um, with, with our neighbor growing and, and the city growing that our wastewater plant is going to need, you know, to, within the next ten to fifteen years, we're going to really need to, uh, possibly upgrade for the, the amount of flow that goes through the wastewater facility.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, failing the construction, we're driving one of the main, uh, sewer force mains right now with Vista, but there's also one from the pump station down in the harbor that comes up to the top of the hill here, that was put in in the early sixties, and it's just the same age as the other one. It's just not, doesn't go under the highway, but it's just as old and, um, it may be less defined, but then if you think about it, maybe not, because the midflows are all going down, down the hill into the harbor, all the raw sewer, and there's over a thousand gallons of men in it, even more when the pumps running. Um, the average flow is a thousand gallons a minute, but it builds up and pumps a lot, probably, um, thirty, something like thirty thousand gallons a minute in the pumps running. I mean, it goes, it waits for a while and it comes off, it's a lot of fluid. And if that, you know, gets in the bay, we're in big trouble. And that, that's an old AC ten-inch main that sits right out here, runs from the harbor up, doesn't run my big issues. And then water mains, um, some of the main water mains that go just down Coast Street, for example, and areas like that are, are made of asbestos concrete, and it's going to be mandated in, I think, twenty twenty-six that all cities have AC out of their drinking water. So that's, and that's a big, you know, that's millions of dollars, but if we, if we work it right and we get certain areas done and name of it's done, like we're doing Coast Street, uh, we could, we could meet that, but still, that's, in my mind, that's really big. So the water mains, uh, sewer force mains, uh, and, and, and the enlargement of the, of the wastewater treatment plant, the drinking water, I think, we can, we can do okay. We're probably going to end up replacing the filters, but we could, again, um, do that in peace and we'll lose so much each year. We're pretty frugal when it comes to those kind of projects. Our crew's really good at, at, kind of, running the show as far as, as they can make water while we're rebuilding. So we could get a contractor in, maybe two filters, one year, um, while the other filters are making water, just working frugal and, and try to get a, say, a, a million dollar water plant put together for a third of that, just by, just by having the, the, the crew involved. You know, so it's, and you see communities and small communities do that. Big towns, places like Newport, they spent ten million on their water, but they, they, you know, they're, it's a big city, big tax base, they've got the funding, um, we can't pull something like that off unless we go to the voters, we have to, but I think doing it this way, I think, the sewer plant's going to be a, a different bear because it's...
It's okay.
What we have to put in a, a biosolids handling facility to, because we can't put activated sludge on farmers' lands anymore after, probably in another ten years, it's going to just go away, and we'll have to hold it to a landfill and where it's incinerated. So what we ended up doing is taking the activated sludge, you'd be watering it, making these caves, and so it's a big, long process, but that's, that's part of our infrastructure that needs to be looked at within the next ten, fifteen years. So there's big, there's big, lots of big ones coming around the bend to approach it correctly, um, and I, I think it's, it's all doable for our small town, and...
One has to be doable.
Yeah. Without having to have the homeowners pay for it.
What about the dam?
The dam, I think we're going to be okay. We're going to have that assessed by engineers, um, after July first. Uh, I think the dock itself will be okay, but we're going to have the, the dam looked at by, uh, by engineers just to see. So I guess we don't know. I'm hoping it's not going to be that bad. It is short-circuiting, but hopefully because of the earth and dam, that we could, uh, just maybe bulken up a little bit more, and with good engineering, I think we could get through this.
There's also the dredging up there.
Yeah.
The dredging of the reservoir.
Dredging, and that, we know that there's, um, high-end poly lines in there now, which is really good because the, the old steel pipes have already gave way, we put new poly lines in there, and they're holding, seems to be working okay. It's just what was there prior to that that we need to maybe bulk up and, you know, we don't have to restore any of the piping, it's just bulking up the dam itself on the, on the storage side.
All right. Brady, uh, the, the cracks in the, in the seawall, or the crack, is there more than once?
Uh, down, down in the harbor, it's two thousand four and three. Yeah, that's, uh, it, it doesn't appear to be getting worse, but it is fracturing. The corps is, uh, aware of it. We made it very clear when they were here with their visit about three weeks ago.
Okay, okay.
Um, and we talked in detail about it, mayor was, that was one of the main concerns with, with them, and, and that and the, the gate, the tide gate, and, uh, they're giving us a report on the movement of the seawall, the new assessment of the crack in the tide gate, and, uh, the, the land itself, the movement of the hillside.
Right, we were going to get back to, uh, the shit that, the report that came through.
Right, and that's, yeah, and what I'll, you know, I gave her, uh, information on the first report that we had like about a year ago, so we'll get her updated on this current one. The land is too different moving, but in the meantime, on the city's end, we went up with, uh, uh, the city crew and a contractor, and we put in new, uh, storm drain lines to ease any of the teddiness of the stormwater.
Absolutely.
So that, and getting the water going off the hillside back to the street and down where it's supposed to go.
That's huge.
Yeah, and so I guess for a point now, we need to possibly overlay, um, pieces in place or catch the areas that we had saw cut, but as far as getting the, the drain water, that heaviness of the stormwater is, is really good. Yeah, that's a possibility.
You know, parking is a huge issue. We are going to take it up to the next council meeting, but this is one that unless you people object, I think it's something we should have an idea, we should go, because this is Department of Commerce that does this kind of stuff, and I think that should definitely be on our list to go for us to continue to grow the town. Another thing I have here is, um, uh, the dredging behind the check dam, but you know, the harbor project is multifaceted, and that's part of the harbor project, so.
Great. Yeah, this morning I, uh, received a phone call from Craig Honeyman, he's the executive director of the League of Oregon Cities, and, um, who Steve Emily comes back, I guess. Uh, and anyway, he's, um, he's got contacts with all the people in Washington that would help us with our infrastructure, uh, sewer, water, uh, and he's, he's all with Ray Buhaber because we're our...
Exactly, yeah. Those are huge ideas.
Yeah, he's, he called me this morning, and he's on our team, and, and whenever we're ready to start moving in whatever direction he's with us.
Well, those are good items too that come up that if they want to change, like directions, like they, like Mr. Buhaber said, you know, you want to start hitting, uh, other buttons. If a button isn't working, then we're there with a list of other, you know, topics and issues that really are affecting our small old town.
Right, uh, that's a way to say, go back, and I apologize for that, but Craig Honeyman, who is the executive director of the League of Oregon Cities, and also our DC contact, called me this morning, and, uh, he is, uh, he's all for any infrastructure, uh, improvement we need in the town, which would include parking and would include our water, and also is directly tied in the money that we need for the, the harbor, so. I want everybody to know that, and he, all I have to do is call him, and he's, he's got, give me an outline and, and...
When can, when can we get him here? Well, I, I think that's great.
Get him to the council? Hmm? Get him to the council there?
What, does he want to, do he want a, uh, League, League of, uh, Oregon Cities has a resource there that they can...
Yeah, it's a resource for the city, for us.
Okay, well, hey, that's...
That's between, between, uh, uh, him and, uh, Ray Buhaber, they were together in Washington as well.
That's great.
Uh, now they're both on, on our team, and Purry is going to contact, you know, Craig Honeyman and, uh, get him and, and Ray Buhaber back together again.
Super.
It's all part of our drive for, uh, visiting the nation's capital.
Excellent.
So Jerome, um, for economic developments down, downtown, what, what are the kind of things you might see that we can roll in, uh, garden funds for that might help? Besides parking, you got that on the list?
Uh, you, you know, uh, Steve, uh, council president?
Steve's on.
Um, I'd, I'd say that was, would be the, besides some, you know, I mean, Brady has outlined some things with our sewer system. Now, some of the, some of the problems downtown, I've got a prob, a couple of problems with the both of them, you had one, then in one building potentially, but it's all, it's, it's on me. It's on the private property owner at this point in time. It's because, uh, a line break on, on, between, uh, the, the building and the main. Um, I would say, and, but I've been talking about Brady on my, on the, on the C-HAC building, I sure got, um, the water is very hard, okay? Uh, A, and B, uh, I'm getting a lot of, uh, of rust into the, the system. I don't know if that's from my side or from the city's side. So I guess that, that infrastructure is a concern of, of mine. But, uh, if there was, you know, I mean, uh, I think it's a little bit up to, I mean, the, the center of gravity, that being in the middle of that view shed out front, Depot Bay, there's a lot of places in Depot Bay, like the south side of there for years, and, you know, they, they're looking for help, but one of the main helps, I mean, is if you can move that view, you know, to the south side of the bridge, then that could cure all the problems. And, uh, that's, of course, that's not going to happen, it's just, it's where business happens, and I've seen businesses come and go on the south side, and maybe this south side improvement, eventually I have to look at all the minutia of the plan for the, the cities in, in, uh, partnership with the state, to put in some sidewalks there, some improvements. I don't know if that's going to help businesses come down there. But parking, um, I would say, uh, if, if you have, it's just like I, I think I've said to the council before, um, if you travel, I, I like to use, because it's somewhere I've been, and that's San Francisco, and, uh, uh, one of the, uh, great, uh, places in San Francisco would be is the place of Eleanor Beach, very popular place.
Right.
And, uh, but it's, it's drying up on the line, it has been for quite some time because there's, there, there's zero parking, I mean, we'll just say zero for the common guy. If you go down, you're going to spend, so, if you get lucky, you might find a place somewhere five blocks from where you want to go on a street corner, and maybe a parking garage with one space in it. But generally speaking, it's a famous dining area, famous place where, that's where the stripping, uh, uh, revolution started is, is there, uh, but it's drying up for, for lack of parking. You know, if you want to go down there and dine, there's some awesome, uh, Italian restaurants down there. Capor has a place down there, but you, you just take a cab, that's which, which you're not going to drive. So parking is an issue that downtown, that, no matter how small a suburb like Depot Bay, we've got an actual downtown there, and, um, that it plays all the cities across the nation that have any kind of vibrant downtown area. And, uh, we get, it's great that people are parking out front. That is huge. I had one city father, Jim Tate, tell me way back, because I had a different twist on it, well, that makes people want to stop even more, so they can see what all the excitement is about when all the spaces are full. So they're looking off-street, okay? And there's, you can't, you, you can't turn towards the ocean, so you're going to turn, you know, of Collins, of Bay, uh, I mean, not Collins, but there's Combs.
Yeah.
Uh, and you're going to turn up those, yeah, those two streets looking for somewhere else to park, and so I guess that's a strategic area in my mind, uh, that we could be looking to help downtown businesses. That's all.
There's one quick question. I heard, uh, uh, something that Jerome said that got my attention, rust. How, uh, how do we find out about the rust and, whether the rust is on one side or the other side? Is that something that we...
Yes, well, the, the main is asbestos concrete, so, um, there's some things at, at one end that are, that are not the wire, that may be an issue, but, you know, flushing, we do yearly flushing.
Oh, so you do, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
There's a lot of minerals in our water too.
Okay, okay.
A lot of manganese and iron.
That, that answers my question, that, will we actually do something?
Yeah, if you were to look at the back of a porcelain toilet in Depot Bay, the rock, the rock porcelain, you'll see the tannins in there and, and the, the minerals deposit there, because we don't put chemicals in our water to oxidize those minerals. It's in a lot of drinking water, um, you know, big cities have it, but, you know, it's just an issue, issue, and it builds up, and the, the best way to deal with it is flushing communication and, and trying to resolve it through...
They're not using labral lines, we're getting out of the...
Really, I mean, it's, uh, uh, Brady and, and the staff, uh, directed by Brady, does, does a great job if you come to him, you know, and, and, on, as needed basis, you know, on, on different, different things that happen. Very, the city's very responsive to the people.
Yeah, we're small, we're quick, it's a small infrastructure that we have, the small, small, like, a lot of tires are. We, we get a lot of the, like, chlorine's another issue I hear a lot of, and it's because we're small, it's not a huge water distribution system, but we're mandated to put so much chlorine, so the turnaround where it dissipates is quite short, especially around the water tank. especially around the water tank and, and that, so sometimes I have a little, or get much chlorine, a little bit, like, our Collins get quite a bit, yeah.
Would you explain to the council, uh, the effect of, uh, shocking the system?
Of water hammer?
Yeah, mhm, and what it does, uh, for a certain period of time, it breaks the particles and whatever moves in, in the system. And, uh, of course, it's gonna go to the first faucet that's turned on.
Yeah, the flushing and water hammer, there's techniques, yeah. We try to do that every year, we work with the fire department, now we're on board with them to help with our, our flushing, and I think it's a good, we, we haven't had that before. I think it's a good partnership around the fire hydrants.